Thank you, everybody, for coming. Just so you know, we're having audio issues, which is why I'm yelling like this. We're going to get started with our licensing board portion real quick, and then we're going to wait about five minutes to 6:30 to allow everybody else to come in, and then we'll start our regular common council meeting. Sound good? And with that, I will call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for March 6th. Note that we do have a quorum, and we have three items on our agenda, the first being approval of minutes, the licensing board regular meeting minutes from February 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On to gen. 9 for consideration. We have a second-hand article dealer for Jade Denzer Toy Box Toys, 1821 A Barton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned seconded. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number three, appointment of Agent S. Petrowski of benevolent corporation Cedar Community, top of the ridge, at 113 Cedar Ridge Drive in West Bend.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned seconded. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the licensing board, I'll adjourn by the call of the chair. We have about three minutes, so you guys can continue your conversations. We'll wait for any of our other guests to arrive, and then we'll get started. Thank you. All right. Welcome, everybody. Before we get started, I am going to remind the council and our audience that we're having audio issues, so for those of us on the council, if we wish to speak, make sure you speak very loud and clear to get picked up by whichever microphone might be hearing us. And if those are the audience, if you could be considerate and quiet when needed, that would be appreciated as well. So with that, I will call to order the City West Bend Common Council meeting for March 6th. Note that we do have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll note that we have 18 items on our agenda, the first being approval of minutes, the common council regular meeting minutes from February 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Model, any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're going to move on to presentations, the first being the Oath of Office for Firefighter Emergency Medical Technician Benjamin Kazemirik. Take away chief.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you tonight and to the community our newest firefighter paramedic, Ben Kazemirik. Ben comes to us, he grew up in St. Francis, and went to high school in St. Francis, and then eventually moved to Allington, where he joined the Allington Volunteer Fire Department. And like most of us, once you start firefighting, you catch the bug, and you do a career change. And Ben did, and we're happy he did that. After his time on the Allington Fire Department, he's enrolled in paramedic school, set to graduate in May. After he graduates in May, passes his exams, he'll be joining us on a ship. We're happy to have him here. We're excited. And his son Ethan is going to put him tonight after his oath of office. We're excited for both of them.
I'm going to have you raise your right hand. I, Stacy Edie.
I, Ben Kazemirik.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
As firefighter.
As firefighter.
Emergency medical technician.
Emergency medical technician.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and welcome to the West Bend team. And next up on the presentations, we have our Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards, and this will be presented by our police chief, Tim Herring. Take away.
Thank you. I appreciate the time again tonight to celebrate our community. It's pretty neat. I don't remember the last time this chamber has been filled to standing capacity. It's a great visualization of what we've been repeating over and over again. The police are the people, the people are the police. It's a very important piece that I share with you, that these are not people that I selected to be honored. These are people that our officers, our CSOs, our dispatchers selected to be honored by their actions. This is department-wide recognition, and the officers, as many as could, are here today that pushed forward these awards. But it really, truly symbolizes that department-wide, we embrace the relationship with our community, that we are not policing a community, we are policing with a community, for a community. So without, turn it over to Captain Rollier. We have a tremendous amount of awards tonight. It's pretty exciting.
Hopefully, my voice holds up to the challenge here. So we're going to go in order of chronological, in chronological order, so starting back in March of 2022. Michael Valskowsky.
Come on over here, Mike. Come on over here.
So on March 26, 2022, at about 8:20 p.m., officers were dispatched to Walmart for a report of retail theft that occurred, and the suspect had fled in a vehicle. Mr. Valskowsky was in the parking lot of Walmart and observed a vehicle leaving Walmart driving at a high rate of speed with no headlights on. Mr. Valskowsky believed this vehicle may be involved in the retail theft. He called West Bend Police and provided dispatch with a license plate and direction of travel. The information was used to locate the vehicle and ultimately arrest the suspect for retail theft. Mr. Valskowsky should be commended for his keen observations and recognition of suspicious activity and willingness to report it.
Congrats, man. Thank you.
Next up, Killian Ray. On March 28, 2022, at 10:30 a.m., Officer Pollard was in the parking lot at 825 East Washington Street when he was approached by Mr. Killian Ray. Mr. Ray informed the officer that he found a $50 bill outside of an apartment building. Mr. Ray reported that he didn't see anyone around it. Attempts to identify and locate the owner were unsuccessful. Mr. Ray is commended for his honesty in turning in the money. On May 21, 2022, around 11:30 p.m., Ms. Julie Han heard what she believed to be a man yelling for help in the wetlands behind 1713 Larkspur Lane. Ms. Han called the police and provided detailed information, including a description of where she thought the man was. Officers responded and were able to locate a 61-year-old man in need of assistance as he was stuck in the swamp. The man became stuck in four feet of water and muck as he attempted to walk through the swamp and could not free himself. Ms. Han's quick actions and quick response allowed the West Bend Police Department and West Bend Fire Department to locate the man and extricate him from out of the swamp, preventing further injury. Mr. Luke Han Yanki, Montgomery Jensen, and Isaac Medina Solis. Representatives. The representative of the group. On May 24, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., officers were dispatched to a parking lot in the 600 block of North Main Street for a report of a male passed out in the driver's seat of a vehicle. The first officer arrived on scene and determined the man was experiencing an opioid-induced overdose. While attending to the man, the vehicle began to roll backwards towards a busy street. The officer requested bystanders, Mr. Luke Han Yanki, Montgomery Jensen, and Isaac Medina Solis, to assist in stopping the vehicle, which they did. Mr. Han Yanki and Mr. Jensen were able to stop the vehicle. The officer attempted to remove the man from the vehicle to perform medical care. Without hesitation, Mr. Medina Solis approached and assisted the officer in removing the male from the vehicle. Mr. Medina Solis's assistance in this incident allowed the officer to perform medical care to the unconscious driver very quickly. The male eventually was revived by West Bend paramedics, and without the assistance of the bystanders, the vehicle would have rolled into the busy roadway and potentially cause a motor vehicle crash.
Great job, man.
Mr. Breeker, Cliff Breeker. Brecker. On June 25, 2022, at about 8:20 p.m., Mr. Cliff Brecker came upon a motor vehicle crash with injuries in the intersection of 18th Avenue and Park Avenue. Mr. Brecker called 911 to report the crash, and as police officers responded, one of the vehicles drove away. Mr. Brecker, without hesitation and without being requested, followed the vehicle and remained online with the dispatcher, updating the vehicle's location. An officer located the vehicle several blocks away and determined the driver of the vehicle had fled the scene, the driver that fled the vehicle, that fled the scene was impaired by alcohol. The driver was arrested for multiple offenses, including OWI causing injury. Thanks to Mr. Brecker's quick actions and willingness to become involved.
Thank you.
Matt Zwick.
That's the great laugh.
To have you at all our meetings.
On June 28, 2022, at about 5:00 p.m., Ms. Samantha Zwick noticed a male in the driver's seat of a parked motor vehicle in the 600 block of Veterans Avenue. Ms. Zwick noted the male's appearance appeared unconscious and believed, based on her medical training as a nurse, the male was suffering from a drug overdose. Ms. Zwick attempted to wake the male and called 911 for assistance. Ms. Zwick was able to wake the male and remain with him until police and ambulance arrived. The investigating officer saw the male to be under the influence of drugs and that the male had driven the vehicle to that location shortly before Ms. Zwick had found him. The male was arrested for third offense, OWI, drug impaired, and possession of fentanyl. Ms. Zwick's quick action ensured the man received medical help when needed, but also prevented a dangerous situation on our road.
Great job. Thank you.
I don't believe Ms. Brown is here, Mariah Brown. But on July 3, 2022, around 5:00 p.m., Ms. Mariah Brown located a purse and a pair of sunglasses on top of a washing machine inside the Maytag Laundry. The purse contained over $2,000 in cash. Ms. Brown asked other patrons in the laundromat if the bag belonged to them, and no one in the business claimed ownership, so she contacted the police. The owner was later identified, contacted, and reclaimed the purse. Ms. Brown's integrity is to be commended. On July 24, 2022, around 4:00 p.m., Ms. Stacy Westerhausen observed an infant left alone in a vehicle in the Walmart parking lot. The weather at the time was 81 degrees. The windows and doors of the vehicle were down and unlocked. Ms. Westerhausen called 911 and checked on the child to ensure he was okay. The infant did not appear to be injured. The mother was later located shopping inside of the store. The investigation determined the three-month-old infant had been left unattended in the vehicle for approximately 20 minutes before Ms. Westerhausen located him. Ms. Westerhausen is commended for her situational awareness and quick intervention to prevent the situation from coming to worse. Luis Pavon Ramon. I don't think he's here as well. On August 8, 2022, around 8:00 p.m., Mr. Luis Pavon Ramon was driving past the Main Street Laundry when he observed a fire inside the business. Mr. Pavon Ramon called 911, approached the building to ensure no one inside the business, no one was inside the business, and also noted that a dryer was unfired. Mr. Pavon Ramon confirmed the business was empty and relayed that to the dispatcher. Mr. Pavon, Pavon, Ramon, quickly, quick response and follow to 911 ensured the fire did not grow larger and did not damage any more of the building.
I remember that call. It was for the fire department.
On August 27, 2022, around 8:20 p.m., a hit-and-run to an unoccupied parked vehicle was reported to the West Bend Police Department. During the investigation, the officer noted exterior surveillance cameras at a business in the area of the hit-and-run collision. The officer contacted the owner of that business, Mr. Sean Murphy, regarding the incident. Mr. Murphy was provided a timeframe. The hit-and-run was suspected to have occurred. Mr. Murphy reviewed several hours of his own video surveillance on his own time and located the suspect vehicle on the video. Mr. Murphy provided a copy of the video to the officer, and the suspect was identified. Mr. Murphy's information led to the suspect confessing to causing the collision and being held accountable for his actions. Wendy Wrights, Kyle Butters, Sherry Becker, Dawn Jazorski, and Jennifer Shep. Team approach here.
If your name was called, come.
On September 23, 2022, while at the West Bend East Football Game, Mr. Carlos Wenzloff had just finished volunteering in the press box and was walking down the bleachers on the north end of the stadium. Mr. Wenzloff suffered a major cardiac event and collapsed on the steps of the bleachers. Officers working the football game were notified, and when they arrived, they found school nurse Jennifer Shep, nurse Dawn Jazorski, nurse Sherry Becker were already assessing Mr. Wenzloff's condition. When they determined Mr. Wenzloff did not have a pulse, Ms. Shep, Ms. Jazorski, and Ms. Becker assisted officers in moving Mr. Wenzloff so CPR could be started. Dawn Jazorski assisted by providing rescue breaths. Jennifer Shep and Sherry Becker continuously monitored Mr. Wenzloff's vital signs and did not leave his side. Officers obtained an ADD, and West Bend athletic trainer Wendy Reitz, Wrights, I'm sorry, Kyle Butters arrived with first aid kits and trauma shears. Mr. Butters cut off the shirt so that the ADD pads could be applied more easily. Mr. Butters and Ms. Wrights assisted in applying the pads for further treatment. West Bend Fire and Rescue arrived and continued treatment of Mr. Wenzloff, and he eventually regained consciousness and was hawking in the ambulance prior to be transported from the stadium. Mr. Wenzloff's doctors later said that without prompt treatment, Mr. Wenzloff, that Mr. Wenzloff received on scene, he would not have lived through this cardiac event. These citizens jumped into action, worked together, provided life-saving care that saved a fellow citizen's life.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
I don't believe Paul Jaisig is here. Jasing. On November 4, Election Day, at around 11:30 a.m., a woman fell in the entrance to the West Bend City Hall. Another citizen had yelled for help, and Mr. Paul Jaisig, who was in City Hall at the vote, responded to help. Mr. Jaisig comforted the female as much as possible while outside on the cold rainy day. Mr. Jaisig remained with the female, demonstrating care and compassion for a fellow citizen until West Bend rescued and fire arrived to his house. James and Tamara Shambo.
There you go, sir. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
On November 13, 2022, James and Tamara Shambo were at Walgreens South when they observed an older man purchased $500 in Amex gift cards. The man attempted to purchase a second one immediately after the first, but was denied by the store staff. The store employee explained to the man that they thought this was a scam, but the man did not appear to believe them. The man explained that he received a phone call and needed to purchase more gift cards to win money. The man walked out of the business. James and Tamara observed this and were concerned the man did not believe the clerk. They followed the man out of the store and explained to him that this was likely a scam. While speaking to the man, the scammer called back, and James and Tamara were present. James and Tamara tried to speak to the scammer on the phone, but the scammer kept hanging up. James then called the police. James and Tamara were able to stall the man long enough for an officer to arrive, and their quick actions and follow-through prevented the man from falling victim to a scam.
Good job. Good job.
On November 16, 2022, at 8:20 a.m., the West Bend Police Department received a report of a motor vehicle crash at East Washington Street and River Road. Prior to the arrival of the officers, the vehicle that caused the collision fled the scene. Ms. Betner had witnessed the crash, as well as the vehicle fleeing. She contacted the West Bend Police Department and followed the suspect as it fled the scene. Ms. Betner was able to provide a description and license plate of the suspect vehicle, and the police located the suspect vehicle. Due to Ms. Betner's quick response and detailed information, the person who caused the collision was located and held responsible. On November 18, 2022, at 10:30 a.m., Ms. Michelle Lay was working as a teller at a bank when a citizen entered the bank on the phone. The citizen asked to withdraw $2,000. Ms. Lay recognized this as a potential scam and asked the citizen further questions. Ms. Lay was informed by the citizen that the caller was demanding she withdraw money and was also listening to the conversation on the phone. Ms. Lay called the police for assistance and was able to convince the citizen the call was a scam. This intervention prevented the citizen from becoming a victim and losing $2,000.
Good job. Thank you.
On December 3, 2022, at 50 p.m., Michael Huzar was working at the Huzar's House of Fine Diamonds when two teenage males entered the business. One of the boys wanted to sell two gold chains he claimed to have been given to him by his grandmother. Mr. Huzar did not believe the juveniles, as they were acting nervous and being evasive. Mr. Huzar called the police. The juveniles left the store, but Mr. Huzar was able to watch the juveniles leave and provided a vehicle description and license plate to police. From that, officers contacted the father of the juveniles, and it turns out the juveniles had taken the chains from their parents without permission and were trying to sell it for quick money. Mr. Huzar's keen observation and intuition caused him concern, and he called the police, preventing the loss of family jewelry. Mary Novatny is not here. On January 7, 2023, around 8:30 a.m., officers were dispatched to the Waterford on Washington Street for a male in the memory care unit who had left the property, leaving out of his bedroom window. As officers were searching the area, an officer stopped Mary Novatny, who was walking on Ralph's Road at East Washington Street, and gave her a description of the male. A short time later, Ms. Novatny called police and reported she saw a male matching that description in front of the Washington County Courthouse. The male was in fact the missing resident from the Waterford. The male had been outside for over an hour, wearing only a hooded sweatshirt, jeans, and boots, and it was 18 degrees outside. Ms. Novatny's willingness to assist likely saved the man from potential risk and health hazards from being outside in inclement weather under dress. Tammy Johns is also not available and not able to be here tonight. But on January 9, 2023, while working for a cleaning service hired to clean a vacant home for sale, Ms. Tammy Johns located $50,000 in cash hidden in an upstairs closet. Immediately and without hesitation, Ms. Johns called police and later, also later determined the previous residence of the home, who was the rightful owner of the cash. The police assisted in facilitating the cash being promptly returned to its owner. Ms. Johns's integrity is commendable. Sarah Vakas, Molly Purplechiner, Just for Quinn, Trevor Heinike, Shane Avinsky, Matthew Tilia, Chase Wanza. Another present. In the past year, these citizens observed impaired drivers in the city of West Bend and acted. In each case, these citizens either followed the vehicle or obtained descriptions and contacted the police. The citizens' willingness to get involved and information provided allowed the police to locate and stop the vehicles. In each of these cases, the drivers were either intoxicated or impaired by use of narcotic drugs and charged with OWI. These citizens are commended for their willingness to get involved. Their actions helped prevent vehicle crashes, serious injuries, and death. Thank you to all those individuals who, for helping ensure our roadways were safe for all lawful citizens to use and enjoy.
Thank you, Captain Vina.
Thank you, everyone.
Sure, as you listen to those, some of those seem like, of course, I would get involved, but we all know, in our years of experience, that that's not always the case. It's really, our gratitude goes off to the people that saw an issue, saw a problem, saw someone in need of services, and didn't just ignore it, maybe battled their uncomfortableness and got involved, and so we commend all the citizens for that. Thank you for your time.
And I'll just echo the chief's comments before you guys scaddle off. Thank you so much. Thank you for stepping up to serve our community. It's a clear example every year that you don't need to wear a badge in order to do all these wonderful things and serve here in the city of West Bend. So thank you so much. We'll just give it one moment pause as we allow those who would like to leave, they can head out. All right. Thank you for that pause, and with that, I will recess the common council to public works.
I would like to call the orders for order of public works. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes from February 20, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Sergeant. Any comments or questions? There are none? All those in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 23-03, Main Street Reconstruction, Walnut to Washington. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to consider a recommendation to award contract 23-03 for the reconstruction of Main Street from Walnut Street to Washington Street. Specific work under this contract will include replacing water main, some sanitary sewers, reconstruction of stone sewer, also sidewalk curb and gutter, street pavements, street foundation and pavement, and decorative lighting poles and fixtures, and restoration of disturbed areas. The contract was bid with four alternates to potentially add certain amenities downtown if budgeting would allow. Those include speaker system, public Wi-Fi, information kiosks, and planters. The bids were received on Friday, February 24, and we received two bids that are summarized in your manual. The original preliminary cost estimate last summer was approximately $1,000. The original preliminary cost estimate last summer was approximately three million dollars, including water and sewer improvements. In January, after design modifications and coordination with utilities and addition of items to the project, the ninety-five percent pre-bid estimate was approximately three point nine million dollars. The bids received, you can see the low bid is about four point six million dollars, so it is beyond the original number that we had for budget. However, given the circumstances of this project, city staff has been looking for alternate funding sources in order to actually build the project this year. I have listed in the memo the original funding sources and the additional funding sources that we were able to gather in order to get all the funds to be able to build this project. Based on all this, we reviewed the bids and we reviewed the qualifications of Dornor Inc., which was the low bidder, and based on work that they have done in the past for the city, we believe they are capable of performing the work described in the contract documents. Therefore, we recommend that the board award the base bid portion of the contract in the amount of four million five hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and ten cents to Dornor Inc. at the unit prices in their bid for work performed, and we further recommend contingency fund for total allocation not to exceed four million seven hundred seventy-one thousand dollars for the construction of this project.
Do you have motion? Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any questions for Max? I'm Richard Delman.
So what do you think happened? Had the price of materials go up or...?
I think it's a combination of several things. The scope has changed a little bit, and we do have increase in prices of material or of items that we expected. I went through the bids, and I noticed some items, such as unclassified excavation, had an increase of two hundred thousand dollars just by itself. We move and replace four-inch concrete sidewalks, about ninety-one thousand dollars. The copper pipe for the water services had an increase of sixty-two thousand. So I have listed about ten items there that are about six hundred twenty thousand dollars higher than what we expected. Furthermore, we are told by our electric consultants who prepare the electrical plans that the bid prices that we received are higher than what they would expect, higher than what they've seen in recent bids. So I think across the board, we have seen increase in material, probably labor as well, and all this has resulted in increased bid prices for this contract. I assume as well, because it's maybe unusual site condition for the contractor to work into, they know that they are going to have to do extra work in order to keep downtown moving. It's not like going in a residential street where you just have car movements in the morning when everybody leaves and at night when everybody comes back. So I think all of those factors have played a role in increasing the price from what we expected.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Max, to what extent do you think that scarcity, or actually, an increase in the number of people out searching to get work done? There's a lot of federal funds that are available, and people are trying to do new projects. I mean, are we simply a victim of trying to do something when other people have money to do stuff and want to do stuff as well?
Yes, I think that's a good point. We know that, for example, just for the electric work, it was hard to find a contractor willing to bid on this project, and I believe it's because a lot of them have maybe more projects than they usually have, and they can fit everything in their schedule. So there is that aspect as well, where funding is available for other projects, there's more work, and therefore, everybody is overbooked, and they could not fit it in their schedule. That's why we only got two bids as well.
Thanks for having me, Jen. I just happened to be there the day that you got the bids, and I know when Jay walked into my office, his, you know, eyes were a little big, but I appreciate everybody being creative on putting together these funds. I did ask Jay to maybe, can you just summarize that difference of point seven million and how we came up with those funds to cover the difference?
Sure. I can do that. The list that Max provided you were all the known planned funds, and then the in-addition to funds were twenty-twenty-three borrowing, which is latex and epoxy paint, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, leftover PMP funds that would have been used on other road projects. So when I say leftover, that just means remaining, not that they would not be used. Road projects that are from twenty-twenty-one borrowing and twenty-twenty-two borrowings, total five hundred and seventy-three thousand. Remaining funds from the River Road agreement with the county, that fund had ninety thousand remaining, and then the last one is four hundred and fifteen thousand from ARPA monies. So assigning ARPA monies from that available list of funds, we had those four hundred and fourteen thousand. You're mugged for Kilborn. It doesn't mean we're not doing Kilborn. It just means we are temporarily moving those funds from the Kilborn project to this project.
Thanks, Jay. Well, I just want to again commend you. Thank you for the creative bookkeeping to make this happen. We've been sharing with the public for quite a long time that this is going to happen, and, you know, despite the little bit of a cost difference, you know, we're going to make sure that we're going to follow through and we promise this, so thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Any other questions? Alan and Alan.
Yeah, Max, how often do we dip into the contingency? Do we generally expend the entire contingency, or what's our track record for actual expenditure of contingency funds?
Usually, we stay within the amount that we allocate to the project. Most of the time, we do not use the contingency funds. Sometimes, you know, the nature of construction is, you're thinking, you're not sure what you're going to find, and sometimes you have a bad surprise. So it did happen in the past where we had to dip into the contingency. However, it's usually a rare occasion, and we're hoping that it's going to be this time around again. And so it happens, but it's fairly rare.
I'd like to ask about a couple of the alternates. Alternate one, speaker system. This is simply the installation of speakers that would still have to be provided. It's not the speakers themselves, correct?
That is correct. There are two alternate bids. The speaker system and the information kiosks, where those numbers are only for installation. The city would have to purchase those items separately and then provide to the contractor for installation.
And the public Wi-Fi includes the entire system that's alternate, too?
Yes.
It just doesn't provide the ongoing funds to run the Wi-Fi, correct?
That is correct. It would be for purchase and initial installation of the system.
And if we were to add alternates on there, how long would we have to add those alternates? Jay, I'll take an answer.
Yeah, maybe before Max responds to the timeframe that the bid is good for, I think I understand Mark serves on the bid board, and the bid board is meeting tomorrow morning at eight fifteen. They will be addressing a component of this four point six million dollar project that was listed in Max's funding source, but they have two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project. They need to assign it from their budget to this project. That action is on their agenda for tomorrow. So, and I'll defer to Ian on the proper wording, but I think the action that you take tonight should be not pending that or inclusive of that action tomorrow.
So the motion would be to grant the, well, to approve the contract along with any additions made by funds or made through funds allocated by the bid board?
Yep, and then to answer the specific question that Alderman Allen just asked regarding alternative bids being added, the bid board president, Mike Housar, in a conversation with me on Thursday night, shared that they might, they have more monies available to them than just the two hundred thousand, that they might be interested in funding some of the alternates. And what is the time that Mark asked, what is the timeframe for that? And I gave him the impression, Max, that if, as long as we got it done by twelve hours later than now, we would still be okay, but I know that these bids, six months from now, aren't going to be good. If you have more specific timeline as to when they need to be awarded, we can talk about that.
Well, the bid prices are valid for sixty days from the opening. So we opened on the twenty-fourth, I believe, so sixty days from the twenty-fourth of February is how long those bids are valid. However, I will let Ian talk about whether we can award the base bid today and then add alternates later, or if we need to postpone this decision until we make the final decision. If we can award by pieces, I'm not sure. What I'm going to say is that I would not recommend postponing the decision because we're on a tight timeframe and we really need to get moving on this one.
I would say that, like I said, the city can approve the contract as, you know, the base bid as recommended, but then the motion can incorporate any additional projects paid for through the bid as determined tomorrow. So in other words, the approval granted tonight is for the base bid contract, but would incorporate any additional projects funded by the bid tomorrow that they would approve. And then you can give the approval to move forward based on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Are there any other questions?
Just, I'll accept the modified motion.
Likewise.
And his second adjustment?
Yeah, likewise, yeah.
Okay, with the modified adjustments. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Be no further business before the Board of Public Works adjournes. Call check.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the order. This is the West Bend Finance Committee for March sixth. We've got eight items on the agenda tonight, first being the approval of the minutes for Finance Committee regular meeting, February twentieth, twenty-three, six twenty-five.
Move to approve. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda, presentation by Aylerz. Mr. Phil.
Well, good evening. Thankfully, I do have a loud voice, so it wouldn't be a problem carrying. I have a couple of agenda items in front of you tonight. I was going to kind of maybe walk through the analysis first, the purpose, and then we'll get to the resolution, if that's okay.
Sure.
As we've done in the past, we are, we've been working with city staff to put together the twenty-twenty-three capital borrowings for the city. And, you know, the last couple of years, we've primarily focused just on capital expenditure that you include as part of your twenty-three budget. So every year, you go through your budget process, you do your capital planning, and you have a target that you've identified over the last number of years of around three million dollars for your general capital projects. So as part of this resolution, then you'll see there's general obligation notes, which is what we have historically done for your capital expenditure. So those are general projects and equipment that you typically do on an annual basis. In addition to that, we have two other components that we are adding, one to the notes, and then two to a separate issue, which would be bonds. Now, our notes, as I've explained before, is anything with an amortization schedule of ten years or less. Historically, again, you have taken the approach, conservative approach, to finance your capital expenditures over that ten-year period. You could stretch some of this out longer if you wanted, but you've done, you've taken the approach to finance those over ten years. So we have added to the notes, it's a three million dollar note, some project costs related, initial project costs related to tax increment district number sixteen. If you recall, that was created recently, and you do have some administrative costs, engineering, planning costs that are upfront costs that will be included as part of the general obligation note issue. So the note issue sizing is three million, three hundred forty thousand, and it will again be three million dollars identified for your general capital and two hundred fifty thousand dollars identified for tax increment district number sixteen, initial costs related to that, to that district. The rest of the costs are issuance-related costs, rating, process, those kind of things that are, that are part of that as well. So that's the first, the first issue, the general obligation notes. Big picture, we have prepared and provided in your packet a pre-sale report. There's a lot of numbers in here, I know. And it also provides you kind of a detailed breakout of the process on everything that goes into issuing municipal security. So as you've done in the past, again, we're going to do a competitive bond sale, meaning tonight you give us authorization to proceed, and then we'll be back next month with the actual bid results, who bid, what the winning bidder was, and what the tax impact did of doing that. So good news, as we have gone through historically, and maybe next meeting we'll have video to show this, is that you're in a position now where you have actually seen the ability to take on these obligations without any tax impact, meaning this isn't going to spike your levy for debt service. We're able to structure this in a way that will really keep your debt levy flat from what you had last year to this year. So that's the first issue, again, dealing with your capital expenditures on TID sixteen. The second issue is a general obligation bond, and why we're doing a bond issue is it's all related to tax increment district number fifteen. This is H. Chaos Development, just north of Main Street. What we're looking to fund as part of this, per the agreement we had with them, is a portion of the Riverwalk project that was allocated in tax increment district number fifteen, and a portion of the Main Street project, the bid you just awarded. The good news here is typically when you issue bonds, you're required to spend the money in these silos, right? So it has to be, if you're going to issue a portion for roads and a portion for trails, it has to be spent just like that. In this case, since it's all related to tax increment district number fifteen, the community development bonds, meaning the monies could be spent anywhere within that tax increment district, meaning if the Riverwalk increases in price and Main Street's a little bit lower, you have the ability to move the money between the two. But what we've allocated as part of this is the Riverwalk improvements at two million thirty-five thousand and the Main Street improvements at one million six hundred and sixty-five thousand, meaning those portions of those projects are being paid from this fund, the TID fifteen fund, as opposed to coming onto the general tax levy and being supported through the general tax. So a portion of Main Street, as was planned when we created tax increment district number fifteen, and there's some angst over that, is being funded through tax increment district number fifteen and the development that's being created by H. Chaos, and then the Riverwalk improvement, a portion of that as well. So those are the two components that we're looking at tonight, general obligation notes and bonds. If you give us authorization tonight, that'll kind of start in motion a number of things. One, we'll prepare, like we always do, an official statement, so your prospectus on the city, and we'll also be talking with standard employers to go through your rating process again. That is tentative, we've been scheduled, just because we have to get on their calendars really early in the process, so we have that tentatively scheduled already. But that's, those are the, those are the actions that we'll start with, once we hopefully get approval tonight to move forward with both of these financings. And then we would be back in front of you with final results on April 3rd. April 26th is when you would close on both the notes and bonds, and funds would be available to start paying for the projects that I've, that I've laid out. So that's kind of a lot in a short time, but happy to answer any questions you have on the actual projects, timing, process, anything that comes to mind.
Just a, just a quick question, Phil, and then pardon me if this is a stupid question, but the Fed hiking rates the last year, however long it's been, does that have, does that likely have any kind of effect on, on the bid, on the bonds that we get? And second question is, is there, is there a trigger point where we start making a decision to do things differently because of that? Or are they completely unrelated?
Well, no, it's not a stupid question for any of you, and I wish I had the crystal ball for you, what's gonna happen with rates. But to answer your question specifically, yeah, Fed policy has moved rates, no question, as has inflation, has had just supply chain issues and all these things that Max was talking about as well. So rates have moved up. We did see a nice correction in rates, starting in early December all the way through January, and then again, we've seen rates kind of creep a little bit again. I can assure you that the rates you saw two, three, four years ago are not gonna be seen for this issue, and I don't know if they're gonna be seen in the foreseeable future either. But when you look at it over a little longer period of time, like, you know, eight, 10 years ago, we're, we're kind of in those cycles.
Okay.
I don't expect Fed policy, if they make another change, which they likely will, will really have much of an impact on interest rates. The real impact was really felt all through '22, and that was, you know, Fed policy, but also inflation, I think, just, you know, some nervousness about that and how it impacted the financial markets. As to whether or not you should make a change in what you're doing, you know, one thing I've learned in a lot of years of doing this, projects don't go down in price. Rates fluctuate, but it seems like projects just keep moving up in costs, and so, like I say, it might be, you know, there might be a reason to delay it sometimes, but I don't see a project cost going down.
Would there be a reason to amortize out over a longer period of time, or?
You know, the note issue, I, the typical capital you do, you can absorb that, I think, very easily with your existing debt structure, that you're actually levying. We are amortizing the TID number 15 projects, the bridge and Main Street, over the life of the district. So we are looking at that issue being an 18-year issue.
True.
Those are assets that we expect to be out there for a long time, and it ties, really ties back to the development agreement you have with HKS as well, and how that has to be structured. So we have taken advantage of financing that portion over a longer period.
Any other questions for Phil? Okay. Then I guess we'll start working on the next agenda items. Agenda item number three, resolution providing for the sale of approximately $3.3 million general obligation promissory note series 2023A.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions for Phil on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you mind hanging out just for a minute, Phil, in case anybody has questions here? Okay. Agenda item number four, initial resolution authorizing 4 million, 60, 60,000 general obligation bonds for community development projects in tax increment district number 15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number five, resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue.
Move to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number six, resolution providing for the sale of 4 million, 60,000 general obligation community development bonds, series 2023B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I think that'll do it for us, Phil. Thank you very much for explaining that to us.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay. Kerry Boundman. It looks like agenda item number seven, sorry, got lost there, unaudited 2022 general fund results.
Good evening. I have attached both the general fund revenue and the general fund expense reports for the fourth quarter of 2022. These are unaudited figures as our annual audit begins this Wednesday on March 8th. Overall, we ended the year with an estimated net surplus of $856,350. One department that came in under budget was the police department, and also another health insurance was under budget as well, and self-usage for 2022. At the end of 2022, our estimated undesignated fund balance compared to the 2023 budget will be at 32.54%, and this is an increase from 31.44% from last year. Is there any questions at all on the reports that I had sent out?
Thank you, Kerry. You know what actually needed on number seven, right? And then, okay, agenda item number eight, a resolution approving carryforward appropriations from 2022 to 2023.
And again, I had included the list of carryforwards from all the funds, from general fund, the debt service fund, taxi fund, water utility, and also the sewer utility. The general fund has the most at $710,231.77. Jay and I had reviewed all of the items, and we are recommending that all those lists be carried forward from 2022 to 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Now, you got a motion and a second. Any questions for Kerry? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kerry, and I apologize for calling you Kerry Boundman, I've got another taxi company that works with, that's her name. Anyways, you have a good night.
All right, thank you.
All right. With no more business before the Finance Committee adjourned by the chair.
All right. And I'll reconvene back to County Council. We are on the consent agenda, agenda items three through 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Muddle. And questions, comments? I just want to give a quick shout out, thank you to our finance team, thank you to Ehlers for, for coming out. I think a couple of us here have been on the council long enough to remember those days when we were not quite in, as, as in great financial condition as we are now currently. So being able to do the borrowing that we're doing, the capital projects, hearing the good report about last year, I think that all, that all gives us kudos to the great, sound financial position that we're in this year. So, thank you so much to everybody for that. And with that, I'll call for, I'm sorry, I did ask for a motion. All those in favors, and am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to agenda items for consideration, we're on number 11, award bid for City of West Bend library re-roof contract. The day is finally here.
It is finally here, so, I don't have to talk much. Well, we have some unflamed water features in our library, and we'd like to request that, because books and water don't go along very well. We received three bids, higher ground roofing, GT Rams, and Wagner Construction. And higher ground roofing is the recommendation we have. We've worked with them to do repairs. They've done good work, and I have no doubt that we will be able to get a quality product on the one.
Excellent. Any questions for our library director? Would I look for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Muddle and Alan. Any questions? All in favor, so don't be saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congrats on the much-needed re-roofing.
We won't be hearing re-roof for a while. Not in the library, you're in the office.
All right. We're gonna go into our closed session items. We'll take these one at a time. The first one, number one, is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, par. 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session for the sale of access to the owned land. And that motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
With that, Alan and Dolan, can we please have a roll call vote?
Alderman Bushley?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkeis?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Dolan?
Aye.
Alderman Hattler?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, number two, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, par. 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This is for the sale of lands in TID 12 and developers' agreement of tax keys, blah, blah, blah. I'm not gonna read all those off.
Motion to approve.
Roll call. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second, and roll call vote.
Alderman Bushley?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkeis?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Dolan?
Aye.
Alderman Dinsen?
Aye.
Thank you, Annette. And last but not least, number three, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, par. 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This is for the sale of 11 acres south of Ford's Place and the developer's agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned seconded. We can have a roll call.
Alderman Bushley?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkeis?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Aaron?
Aye.
Alderman Hattler?
Aye.
I missed Dolan.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Alderman Dolan.
You should say nay, just for that. All right, we are gonna be going into closed session, but we'll be reconvening in a little while. Thanks. We're gonna reconvene into open session and take up the possible action regarding sale of 11 acres of land south of Ford's Place and the developer's agreement.
And I would like to make a motion to accept the offer to purchase in the developer's agreement for Kennel Marine Metal Products.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, so don't be saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll just give you guys a quick shout out. Thank you so much. We learned a lot in closed session that the public will hear very soon via our press release, but thank you so much for expanding right here in the City of West Bend, growing the workforce here, raising the next generation. It's just awesome, humbling story that we get to share about the success here, right here in our community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to reports, first of which is a report by Alderman Burkeis regarding the library board meeting held on June 21st.
I know, you guys have really been waiting, you know, and bated breath. Cool, I'll get right to it. The last meeting of the library board was held on February 21st. The meeting began with the pledge of allegiance and approval of the consent agenda. We reviewed the financial reports for January of 2023, which included a couple of donations. One was from James and Amy Pets for Family Programming and Kids Crafts, and one donation was given in memory of Ken Porter. We thank everyone for their donations, they are appreciated. The board then received a briefing from Gina Beertser from the Downtown Association concerning the temporary location change to the, this year's farmer's market, how, and how it will affect the library. Thanks to Gina for filling us in with all these changes, it's gonna be an interesting year. Steve Theory, the library director, spoke on several topics from his written report, the first being his meeting with the Mid-Murray Municipal Association, to which he present, or he provided a presentation on municipal library boards and how they differ from other types of boards. Steve also briefed us on library legislation date, or legislative date, which was held on February 7th, and the legislation that is pending before the state legislature. Say that three times fast. Legislative, right. In particular was Assembly Bill 15, which I told you guys about last meeting, that was LRB 1095. The takeaway that they got from the legislative day was that most legislators are very supportive of libraries in general, so that was good to hear. Our discussion turned to changes in library, or in county funding, and the dispersments of funds to other libraries in the county, and how that is all taken care of. Agenda items for consideration included discussion of the annual report to the State of Wisconsin, amendments to 2021's report, and approval of the 2022 report. We were also given the all-close dates for 2023, which are the dates that the library will be closed to the public. These dates correspond to the dates that all city offices are closed for the year. We also changed the date for the November 2023 board meeting due to the Thanksgiving holiday. All these changes were approved by the board. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for March 21st at the library. I'd also like to remind everyone that board meetings are open to the public and guests are encouraged, so stop on by if you got the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And any questions for Alderman Burkeis? And we got a report by Alderman Taylor regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Park and Rec Commission met on Thursday, February 23rd. We got update on lifeguards for Ragnar Beach. We require roughly 20 guards. We currently have 15 hired, 13 more are taking course in the next few weeks, so Ragnar Pond is looking like it'll be a successful goal this summer, thankfully. Lifeguard stands are currently being upgraded, and we are also in the process of hiring attendants for the beach house. Spring/summer activity guide is nearing completion, that will be published here in the next few weeks. Sign-up for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run began on March 1st, with a record number of kids signed up on the first day. That will be capped at, I believe it's 2650 this year, so if you're interested in it now, it's a great event. Swim lessons continue to have strong numbers, partnership with the Y and the West Bend High Schools, that has worked very well, both with swim lessons and with either of our lifeguards. Received an update on the Riverwalk project, which is currently ahead of schedule, moving along very nicely due to some favorable weather, shaping them up real well. Carcass Field is going to receive six 80-foot light poles, which will be installed here in the next couple of weeks as part of that renovation. We approved the Ragnar Beach fees for 2023. Went through a list of fundraising priorities, which there are a million in town right now. We did not prioritize, so in the future, we will determine which ones we're going to push, now that Ragnar is nearing completion. Approved a request by the Badger Orientarian Club to make improvements at Glacier Blue Hills. There is local Orientarian club that is going to change some of the trail markers, update the map, all at no cost to the city, and in cooperation, they will not do anything that involves either the Gears group or the IHH Trail, so that'll be an improvement out there. We approved summer program fees for 2023. Approved an overnight camp at Lake Maran for Shorewood High School, they do a river trip, and then they camp out in the parking lot of Lake Maran, they do that every year. We also approved a new event called Chasing the Bone Adventure Race for April 29th. It's a biking and kayaking race, it's either four-hour, eight-hour. Participants arrive here, they have no idea where they're going, they're handing a map to, here we go. And there's, there's like kites that they hang in certain places, is that it's pretty crazy, I guess, but they'll bike as far as New Fane, and jump in kayaks, and it sounds like it'll be a pretty cool deal, so that's being put on by Gears and a club out of Fond du Lac. Let's see, what else? We approved our 2023 meeting dates. We accepted donations from Gears in an amount of $5,450 towards Glacier Blue Hills grooming equipment. Dielectric Corporation, $1,250 for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, and Bank 59, $2,500 for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. Our next meeting is Thursday, March 23rd. That's it.
Thank you. And questions for Alderman Taylor? Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Randy, I was just, I don't know if you're gonna be aware, if there, of the variables, but what, what is it that, that caps the?
The mud run.
The mud run, thank you.
I think it's time constraints, they've released so many in a group, and they've only got so much time to get that many kids through safely.
It seems, it seems to expand a little bit every year, though, that just getting more volunteers and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, when you put 2,600 kids down, or plus grandparents and parents, and that park gets four years.
I'm there at the end line, yeah, I know. I'm there at the end, yeah, I know, it's crazy.
I'm guessing it's just, because they start in waves, it's getting that many kids and, you know, allowing them sufficient time to get through, and the next wave comes through, I think that's about all they can.
Sure, sure.
And parking and everything else.
Yeah.
I don't believe we reached the cap last year, we were really close, but it's a great event.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. I encourage people to go.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Randy, you mentioned that we were dealing with 20, 28 lifeguards to be in Regner. It sounds like we, we're gonna have a pool of 28, assuming everybody.
If everybody passed the course.
Will we take that 28 and parcel up the available hours across all of them in some fashion, or will we take the first 20, or?
I think we'll use them all, we'll use them all. I mean, some on eight hours, some on 20 hours. I'm guessing they're gonna take, and some equipped, so I'm guessing they're gonna take as many as we possibly can, so. We'd rather have two than one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll open up to any news for the good order. I just wanted to say happy birthday to my youngest son, Remy, who's turning eight today. I'm sure he's not watching this, and hopefully he's in bed, but happy birthday, buddy. And having no further business for the common council, I adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a good night.